For which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I ask for a moment of silence for former police officer Tom Doyle. May he rest in peace.
Thank you.
Rope.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois. Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green. Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Or Miss President.
Approval of minutes, so move. Motion by Mr. Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents?
We have the municipal shelter report for July 2024.
Seized and filed. Anything else?
That's it for this evening.
For the good of the city, I'd like the mayor to come up.
Good evening once again. First, I'd like to open the meeting, I'm not sure if everybody on the council is familiar with an incident at Maple Hill Park, but if Ray Lynn is here, I think she is, if she can come up and join me too, is that tonight we have with us the Dorn family. And I wanted to express my deepest admiration and congratulations to Jessica Dorn, the mom, and her children Juliana and Sienna, for the job that you did raising your daughters. And as a result of that, you raising those children in the right way, it resulted in your family's heroic actions on June 25th that saved a small child from drowning at Maple Hill Park, and those actions were truly remarkable. Just the background is at approximately 4:30 PM while Juliana and Sienna were at the Maple Hill Park with their mom, they all heard a man yelling, "Someone is drowning." Without hesitation, Juliana and Sienna rushed to the pond. Juliana jumped in fully clothed to search for a small child who was now underwater. Keep in mind, the pond was very murky and covered with algae. She found the child and pulled the young child out of the water, and the child was not breathing or responding when they were able to get her out of the water, a person out of the water. She ran with the child to her mom, Jessica, who immediately flipped the child over and started working on her, pushed her stomach in repeatedly in hopes to expel the water, until the child screamed at the top of her lungs, and they were screaming at the child to wake up. Child then spit out the water and began to cough. Jessica then pulled the additional algae from the child's mouth and nose. It was then the child started to scream, and they knew the rescue was successful. This family's quick thinking and the application of life-saving techniques demonstrate not only their bravery, but also their compassion and presence of mind. Jessica, you must be incredibly proud of your kids, and I'm sure they are proud of you, as all of us are also proud of your entire family. Your family's courage serves as an inspiration to all of us, and underscores the importance of life-saving skills. On behalf of the City of Middletown residents, and the common council, and myself, we recognize your life-saving efforts, and we'd like you to come up, so we can at least present to you and your family a certificate of recognition for a job well done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sienna?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh my goodness, wow.
All right. Anyone else for the good of the city, would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor DeStefano, members of the council. My name is Dr. Anne Marie Pendleton. First, I want to thank you for all you've done to revitalize our city, celebrate local business, and make Middletown a great place to live. I'm a resident of Middletown. I'm the mom of a Midi, and my family has lived in Orange County for several generations. My dad's cousin Wendell was an Orange County resident, and later the mayor of Cooperstown. And I say this so that you understand the deep love that my family has for Orange County and for New York. It seems that most residents are unaware of coordinated efforts to bring large-scale industry to Orange County. And many that do know say that nothing you do will matter, but for her sake, I have to try. There are several mega warehouses proposed around the Middletown area alone, some as large as 900,000 square feet. Plans note the use of Middletown water resources, and it's unclear what will be stored or distributed as not all of the tenants are confirmed. I'm in favor of economic growth, but I would rather see the expansion of medical and mental health services, our amazing local businesses, and recreational spaces. Several large warehouses already built in our area now sit empty. And while these surely created job opportunities during construction, they don't seem to guarantee long-term economic stimulus for our local residents. There is a 400,000 square foot warehouse proposed within a half a mile of my home on Kirby Town and Route 6, and it has plans for 90 loading docks, 250 parking spots, and 24/7 operations. It's within a literal stone's throw of my neighbors' homes. As I read the traffic, environmental, and cultural impact studies that I have access to, I quickly realized two things. One, the developer focused only on their project rather than the cumulative effects of the 7+ that are proposed. And two, none of the reports mentioned impacts for Middletown. There are over 1,000 Middletown residents that live within the bounds of the traffic study alone, and some are from vulnerable populations, including children and seniors. Several apartment complexes, senior housing and assisted living settings, and the mid-city transit buses access the same roads as the proposed warehouses. And we all know how tight the mid-city bus schedule is to get the Midees to school on time, and ensuring the children's safety with this increase in traffic will be paramount. The side effects of any distribution center are problematic at all stages and include worsening air quality, health, and general well-being. I would like to ask Middletown leaders to consider an independent traffic impact study and review of the volume of water and power that would be required. In the reports I reviewed, there's also no mention of traffic congestion's effects on emergency service response time, necessary staffing, or related impacts. The roadways proposed for the sites include Route 6, 17, and I-84, as well as surrounding streets, and the New York State Department of Transportation noted concerns about the capacity. When my 81-year-old dad visits, we drive all around Orange County to see his favorite spots, and the beauty that he found as a child is amazingly still present in our county. The nostalgia is palpable. Now, I question the veracity of his and my aunt's memory regarding whether Pete's, Anna's, or Texas Lunch serves the best hot dog, but I have a wish that my daughter will remember her childhood as fondly as my dad remembers his. And even more than that, I have a desire that all children in Middletown will grow up in a healthy, safe place where they can thrive. For the good of our city, I urge you to prevent this type of industrial growth. I have confidence that Middletown leaders can help preserve our area so that it is a wonderful place for generations to come. And thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you.
So I'm with Anna. There's 10 warehouses in Waywayanda that are in various stages of approval.
Can you just?
Oh, Mike Martin. Sorry about that. 10 warehouses in Waywayanda in various stages of approval totaling almost 3.8 million square feet. Number of loading docks is going to exceed 500. And there's going to be a lot of truck traffic coming up 17, off 84, and there's no lights, there's nothing set up. We're hearing from both the town of Waywayanda and Goshen that a lot of this water, when you ask about the water, where's the water coming from, they're saying it's coming from Middletown. And you ask them, well, what's your contract? They say, "We got a 30-year contract," but there's no details. So I'm not sure that we have the water to send them, and I know it's important for the city to sell water, I get that. And the second thing is obviously the traffic. You're probably going to have about 400, conservatively, 400 tractor-trailers coming off of 84 onto 17, cutting up 17 from 17, the 17M from Route 17. Be more traffic on 17 as they cover over from the throughway to get here, and it's going to cause, you know, a lot of problems. Dulson Road coming up into the city will be blocked off at times. The businesses there, the car dealerships and all that, they're going to have a hard time getting their customers in and out for servicing and, you know, purchasing vehicles. So I know that the town of Waywayanda is sending this up to the county planning board, but it looks like they're just rubber, they're doing this piecemeal by project and they're rubber stamping it. Now, my understanding is that there should be something where the county looks at this globally and talks with the state, talks with, you know, other impacts on the other surrounding communities, and that's not really happening. So I, you know, I just want to ask you to do what you can to talk to the county, talk to the other officials, and if you want, a list of some of the projects that I put together so far, and plus what's going on in Goshen and 17. I mean, you're just, you know, all the nice stuff you've done in the city, I can see it's going to be choked off as far as traffic, because now people won't be able to come up Dulson, won't be able to get off 84 there, and they'll just have to come in Main Street and 211.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody wants a copy of that, I got it. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Nichman. I live in Middletown's 4th Ward. I've been an advocate in the community for a while, having served as an outreach worker in Middletown's homeless shelter honor, and now I work as a care manager through Access Supports for Living. I would like to take the opportunity tonight to thank you for your service to the city, and I'm going to speak briefly tonight about the need for the City of Middletown to pass Good Cause Eviction. So currently, our shelter system is full, and our hotels are overflowing. As someone who helps fill out housing applications on a daily basis, I could tell you that we now have three-to-five-year waitlists with homeless families living in hotels for years, many of whom are working class. There are so many vulnerable people who are being evicted left and right, at no cause of their own, but because of corporate landlords and property developers that are pushing our local residents out. Middletown has the opportunity to adopt these protections locally and ensure that it covers as many tenants as possible by passing a strong version that defines a small landlord as someone who owns a single unit. The City of Middletown should do everything it can to help people stay in their homes and in our community. Good Cause Eviction, as passed in Poughkeepsie, Albany, Ithaca, and Kingston, will give renters peace of mind so that as long as they keep paying the rent and don't break their lease agreements, they can renew their lease and stay in their homes. As of right now, we already have really long waitlists for housing in Middletown, so policy or laws like Good Cause Eviction helps keep our good tenants where they belong in their homes. That way, we could focus on the unhoused populations, the vulnerable populations, the populations that I serve on a daily basis just across the street, Access Supports for Living. You know, we already have such long waitlist for our supportive housing, like SPOA, I don't know if some of you are on the SPOA committees, but we really want Good Cause Eviction to keep our good tenants where they belong, so that we could focus on our unhoused population. So really, I want to keep urging you guys, this is my first time here, but I want to keep urging you guys to pass Good Cause, and if I have to keep showing up and keep advocating, I'll bring some statistics and stuff. Just, yeah, want to push for something that I believe is something we really need in our city. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Amanda Crump, and I live in the 4th Ward, and I work as a domestic violence advocate. I'm taking the opportunity today to talk about Good Cause Eviction. Good Cause Eviction is crucial because it protects good tenants from being evicted for no fault of their own. In my line of work, I have come across many individuals who are struggling to find any affordable housing and are facing unreasonable evictions. The City of Middletown should do all possible to help residents in remaining in their homes and communities and protect them from rent being heavily increased. Renters will have peace of mind knowing that as long as they continue to pay their rent and do not violate the lease, they will be able to renew their lease at a reasonable rent and remain in their homes. I call upon the council to define small landlord as owning one unit to cover as many tenants as possible. Landlords should have to justify rent increases over 10% and evictions in court. Rent is going up locally, and people are being forced out of their homes. We need to protect our community and our people who are just hard-working citizens trying to make ends meet and trying to provide for their family. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I really do hope you'll join the other communities and pass Good Cause Eviction. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Remarks, Mayor?
I want to thank those who came in about Waywayanda, the issue going on in Waywayanda. I spoke with Mr. Martin today, and I know he's called my office a couple of times. And just to clarify a couple of points. One, the City of Middletown has an existing water agreement with the town of Waywayanda Water District that goes back 20, 25 years. We provide up to 200,000 gallons of water and sewer per day to the town of Waywayanda. They use maybe 60,000 to 70,000 at the most at this point. So how that district uses that water is up to the Waywayanda Water District, not up to the City of Middletown. There is discussion that, an agreement that we have with the County of Orange for the development of the Indigo Reservoir, or the Indigo Site, to provide up to a million gallons a day of additional water supplies to the City of Middletown that can then be distributed to communities like Waywayanda, Goshen, and others. But that has, that agreement is not even close to being put in place. The studies have not been done to identify the water resource. That cost is well over a million dollars to conduct the study, and we are in the early stages of seeking funding for that project. But I don't believe that any of these properties can make a representation to any board, town board, or planning board, that there's a deal with the City of Middletown to receive adequate water and sewer services for, in excess of what their existing agreement requires. Now warehouses on the whole do not require a lot of water and sewer. I don't know if all these projects are in front of the board officially, but I can tell you that a couple of years ago, with the Dulson Town Road project that was being proposed, both warehousing and a recycling station, Marangi Recycling, that the city did hire an outside engineering firm, CDM, to examine the planning board process and to monitor the town as they go through that process. Keep in mind, the town is in control of this process, not the City of Middletown. This is like the second time now that residents in Waywayanda, and I'm not saying they're all from Waywayanda, but in Waywayanda have woken up to the fact that there's a large proposal in their town that they're now asking the City of Middletown to get involved in more deeply than we can. We don't have legal recourse into the opposition of their project unless they're violating one of the SECA or any of the other processes that are required under law. So all we can do is monitor, and if there's a violation of some type, then we can raise those issues, and we will. So, but we don't have the authority to approve, we don't have the authority to say, because you don't want the type of development that your town is approving that we can withhold the water and sewer from the current agreement that we have. We are looking to expand the agreement, but I would say that's at least three to five years away. I mentioned to Mr. Martin, it is actually impossible for anyone to make a representation in front of a board that they currently have water and sewer service to the city, or from the City of Middletown for these projects if the aggregate exceeds what is currently being used, plus the balance of the 200,000 gallons that are currently in place. So we'll take another look, we'll have CDM take another look at the current process, how many are going in front of the board. The county is a primary player here. I spoke with the county executive today. He advised me that he's not sure that the Waywayanda supervisor is in favor of this project, because I asked him, you know, what is Mr. Sorensen going to do? And he said he's going to do his due diligence, just like he would, he's required by law to go through a process also in his review. So my question to the advocates who are opposing this is, you can't just let the Waywayanda supervisor say, "I'm not going to get involved in this." And that's what I'm being told, is I'm not supporting it and I'm not opposed to it. If you're opposed to the project, the supervisor in Waywayanda has a lot more clout on the project than we in the City of Middletown have. So they can go to that board, the town board can speak to the town planning board. This is all town-controlled. We will do what we can, we have environmental justice issues, we have a lot of things that, you know, assuming the truck traffic and all those things are addressed though, according to engineering standards, there's not a leg for us to stand on. But the town has the power of planning, and rejecting what is being proposed, we don't have that power. But we will look into it, we will continue to monitor it. As I said, I think the, we spent well over $20,000 on the last project in reviewing the Dulson Town Road and the interchange there, and what was determined at the end of the game was it wasn't the best solution, it's not something that we would have done, but they were within their legal rights to approve it. We could have litigated it, the attorneys wanted $250,000 to litigate, and that litigation would have resulted in us losing. So there's a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers, is not to be, just become a cheerleader in opposition to a project, but to have a legal basis for opposing it. And that legal basis will be established through the engineers and through the attorneys that review Waywayanda's proposal. But the ultimate decision is Waywayanda, the Waywayanda supervisor, the Waywayanda town board, getting them involved in the process. We went through this with CPV, the silence of Waywayanda residents until the deal was done, and then they came here screaming at us that we had a financial relationship with them, which we believe was protecting groundwater and so on, but there's an argument. There was a disagreement. But that disagreement was not brought here until the project was way down the line. But on the other hand, in this case, you're bringing it here during the project, but you have to understand our limitations and our, what we can oppose and what we can't oppose. But I would encourage them to go to the Waywayanda board, talk to the Waywayanda supervisor, and don't accept an answer is that we're not going to oppose it, or we're not going to support it. You need them to oppose it, and that's the bottom line. I don't think all of these projects are in front of the board at one time, they may be being talked about, but we have not received notice, which we're required to receive if it's within a certain amount of distance from the city, of, that these projects are literally in front of the Waywayanda planning board. But we're going to follow it up. I met with Mike Martin today, and we'll follow it up, and if we need to spend a few dollars on our consultant to review and to watch the process, we certainly will. In regards to the Good Cause Conviction, we are looking at it, it's in Mr. Johnson's, Alderman Johnson's committee. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I'm not in favor of the proposal being brought forth by the residents that have spoken at our meeting regarding single units being under some type of rent stabilization program. I keep in mind to the council that one of the reasons why we have not delved into it has been the litigation that's been going on throughout New York State regarding communities that have adopted Good Cause Eviction. I think almost every community that has adopted it locally has had it overturned at some point and have passed it again. I think within the last two weeks, another community, I'm not sure if it was Poughkeepsie or Newburgh, one of them, once again, the court put a hold on it. So we're trying, if we do something, we're going to do something that's going to protect tenants, but at the same time also have some protection in there for landlords also. Because we deal also with bad tenants. We don't just deal with bad landlords in the city, we have a lot of bad tenants we have to deal with, and I don't think it's appropriate for a owner of a two-family home who lives downstairs to be forced to comply with some design of rent stabilization or rent control that statewide has existed but applied only to eight units or more. All of a sudden, this is a big change in New York State on how you control rents, and that's coming from somebody who, by the way, advocated for the right to establish ETPA 25 years ago in the City of Middletown, and was rejected by the county, and at that time the county had to adopt it and allow the city to do it. So there are ways to do things. We're looking at possibly requesting our own legislation, we're looking at the state legislation that passed, and, but there's many, many options out there. But again, it'll have to be heard from both sides, and the impacts on both sides, and the impact of overall development within the city. And I think that's all I have. I encourage those to go to the changes in state law that was issued by the state rental laws that was issued by the Attorney General's Office, and see what rent protections have been passed over the past few years, and more needs to be done. And we had a landlord in Middletown that tried to raise rents in one of the apartment complexes by 50%, and we did get involved in that, and we did get it knocked down by discussing with them directly on behalf of the tenants, but that's the exception, I understand, rather than a rule. But, so we do need to have some protections, but I don't think the protections go as far as what's being requested by those who have spoke at the last two meetings. And that's all I have.
And Christopher Mayor, Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. Mayor, I get asked, how are we doing on the ONW? Has anything started yet?
Yes, it has started. The remediation and structural process has started. It's about a $1.8 million contract. The contractor's been in now for, I think, three or four days. That will be clearing the brush to loose debris in the building, will be shoring up the building to allow the engineers then to get in, physically get in rather than using drone and whatever else they've used in the past, and then we'll be able to get better cost assessments at that point on what it's going to take to rehab the building. We're pretty confident about it, but Phase 1 will be done, I think, within three or four weeks, and we'll start getting some more, better cost estimates at that point. But the project has begun.
Okay, very good. And also, on Coach USA, have we heard anything more about that?
Coach USA is in bankruptcy.
Right.
The county is still reaching out to see, hopefully we'll be able to keep that, someone's going to buy it. It's just a matter of when they'll be able to release that property. That's being handled by the county attorneys and those on the Coach side, and we're not directing, directly dealing with Coach on that, but...
I just assume that'll affect eventually the Heritage Trail and Transportation Center.
Yeah, yeah, but everyone's very confident that's going to happen because there's going to be a new player owning Coach.
Okay.
But during a bankruptcy proceeding, I guess it's hard to siphon property away or take property away from a company in bankruptcy. So it'll happen.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Johnson.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just, I just want to emphasize the two answers you gave to the speakers at the mic this evening with respect to the rent issue. I think the mayor's made it very clear that at the outset... I think the mayor's made it very clear that at the outset, he's not really sharing your point of view, which doesn't mean you can't come and address us and give us your point of view. There's a standing invitation to the mayor and the administration. When they have some of their facts and figures put together, we'll invite them back to legislative, and then they can articulate their point of view. And we really have not had a substantive conversation at the council level until that process occurs. So it is something that we're considering as we go along. With respect to the Way We Yanda, as Yogi Berra said, this is deja vu all over again. CPV, we said air quality. I live 20 feet over the line. That doesn't mean I have no standing in what you're doing, but actually, it did mean that we had no standing in what you're doing. That was somewhat clouded with the issue of the brown water. I understand that, but I hope that you, both of you will take it back to your group, that the city is neither complicit nor do we have a standing in anything related to what they're doing. The Way We Yanda board, if you liked them, you were happy. If you didn't, you said they're going to do whatever they want. Lots of conspiracies, I don't know. But it needs to be clear, we did due diligence on Dulcet. We did not prevail. So if you're following the rules to the letter, then maybe you're allowed to do whatever you want to do. That's how government works, whether we like it or not. But I think on behalf of Middletown, you should speak up to it, because that was the whole problem with Dulcet Town is the traffic. All those trucks to get there had to go through all the places where we live, but we don't really have standing. So hopefully, you'll take that back to them and keep up the good fight. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for the mayor? Okay, thank you.
All right, reports of Alderman Economic, I mean, Department Heads, Economic Development? About to skip Department Heads.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update on the house that we're doing on Linden Avenue. It's getting close to being completed. We're already in the process with Pathstone to find a buyer, and I understand there's already a couple families interested. So that house is going to be reactivated soon with new homeowners. We're on our way to working on another house on Linden Avenue, and that will be our third house on Linden that we're going to be doing. And that, it's just up the street from the current one. And we'll be, again, reactivating a house that's been sitting dormant and get a family there. And also, the house on 54 Washington Street, that's going to be going out to bid. So you're going to see these three homes coming together. Also, next week, Runford Downtown Weekend, August 17th. We have these postcards that have gone out throughout. We targeted around the race route. There's about 15,000 of these being delivered in the mail throughout the city and the surrounding area. We're going to be starting August 15th is the Thursday night. We're going to have a major concert at the Paramount. We are the champions. That's at 8:00. Also, we have an outdoor concert that night. You can start picking up your race packets that evening on North Street at Runford Downtown Park. August 16th, another concert at Runford Downtown Park, race pickup, and then the big race on August 17th. So it's not just a run, it's also a walk. It's a good time, a post-race party, taste of Middletown, a bunch of stuff, Kid Zone, Family Zone, Zumba. So it's a great time in our downtown, in our city next weekend. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria? Okay, thank you, Maria. Police Chief?
Good evening. Night out against crime tomorrow night, hopefully. So we are holding off right now. We're trying to keep it scheduled, hoping that the rain works with us. It looks like on the weather right now, we have a gap that should fit our timeframe. I know in years past, we've rolled the dice and we've been successful. Once in a while, we lose that fight there, but we are still going on for tomorrow. Five-day through all park. As of right now, we don't have a rain day because we're that hopeful that it's going to work out. We're hoping to see all of you out there with us tomorrow evening. Just really quick, like to thank all the sponsors and supporters. Sergeant Welch does an outstanding job planning, organizing this. I can't thank her enough. And I need to thank Senator Scoofus for funding us this year, so appreciate that. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Just some quick updates on summer so far. I'm going to give you some of the numbers for our sports camp and Little People Play Time camp. This Friday is the last day of those two camps. So Week One, Sports Camp, we had 90 kids, Little People Play Time, 25. Week Two, Sports Camp, 153, Little People Play Time, 40. Week Three, 146, 36. Week Four, 114 and 30. Week Five, 132, 31. And this week, right now, Sports Camp, 122, and Little People Play Time, 34. Also, to fill you in, earlier May, June, we spoke about the camp support counselor that we were looking to have at Sports Camp to help with a lot of the social, emotional issues that the campuses are having. And I do want to report out that Marcus Rett has done an amazing job over at Sports Camp. There was one week that he couldn't be there, and that week, unfortunately, we had to send home four kids that week because of behavior issues or social, emotional issues that they were having at camp. So Marcus, from day one, came in, and he's done a tremendous job there, and we are truly grateful to have him there, and he's making a big difference with the kids and helping out with the counselors. So that position is hopefully something that we can continue every single year if we can get the appropriate staff in there to do the job. Update on some of the pool numbers. These numbers that I'm going to give you is the numbers on a hot weekend. So when we have like the cloudy or thunder throughout the day, these aren't those numbers. This is like a weekend where it's hot and like a busy weekend. So at one time, the highest number we hit on hot weekends is 160 in the big pool at one time. That doesn't mean 50 people might have been there earlier and left, so we might have had 400 people throughout the day. But at one time, in the pool areas, 160. On the splash pad at one time was 45, and at Sproch Street Pool, 30. It's hot days on the weekends. We did hit capacity at Davidge twice this summer. And then we have a whole protocol that we go through is, once you pay and you go in the gate, if you, once you leave to get a snack or go home for the day, if you want to get back in, you'd have to get back online when we hit capacity. But that happened twice this summer. Our last day for pools is going to be Sunday, August 25th. So please know, I know there's still a week left of summer, but we're already getting very tight with guards, with them going back to college and playing fall sports. We're losing some of our guards because athletes and lifeguards go hand in hand, and they are playing the fall sports, and those hours are starting to hit their practice hours as well. So we wish we could stay open longer up until school starts, but we just don't have the guards to do that. Our playground program, on an average day, if it wasn't raining, we are giving out throughout our sites 50 lunches a day, and we're serving about 70 kids in a park a day. So 50 of those kids are coming to get a lunch, and then another 20 are just coming to play with the counselors that are there. And the last day for that program is Friday, August 23rd. A few thank yous for people who have assisted with us and collaborated with us throughout the summer. Middletown School District for allowing our sports camp program to be in Monhegan Middle School. When we hit COVID and we had to be outside at Davidge Park, that is not ideal at all. So we're always truly grateful when the school district allows us and works with us and bends over backwards so we can be in the school, even though that they have a million construction projects going on and renovations, even in the building while we're there at the time. So we're truly thankful to be there. The Monhegan Middle School staff, including and especially the custodians, who are amazing when we run out of soap or paper towels, toilet paper throughout the day, they're always around and quickly are able to come and help us out and change things and clean up messes that we've made. Food Services, who does an incredible job all summer long with the free lunches in the playgrounds, and also the meals that are going to our Little People Play Time and our Sports Camp. And some of our visitors to our camps, the Middletown Police Department, the Middletown Fire Department, Darrellin from Fiercely Fit Nutrition, Sensei Izzy, our art instructors that come in, DJ Echo, who hosted two dance parties at our Sports Camp and Little People Play Time, and Girl Scouts, who also came into Sports Camp and collaborated with us to do some programming with the kids at Sports Camp. And a last thank you to Strawberry Fields, to Neta McCree, who has been collaborating with us numerous times throughout the summer with our playground program, with giving out free ice creams to the kids in the playground, and also with some of our programming on the weekends. Like this past weekend, we just did Storytime Come Alive, and Neta was there with her staff giving out free ice cream to the kids in the park who attend, either show up to the playground program or attend one of our events. Our youth fitness, it was mentioned by one of our Recreation Commission members about taking what we do on the road. We all know that us being at the County Route 78 is sometimes difficult for families to get to that building. So we started youth fitness on the road and going in, pushing into neighborhoods to do that. We're also looking to continue that as long as we get the funding from the Youth Bureau that we apply for every year, so we can start pushing into the program into the local neighborhoods. So that's been successful. In the summer, we've also had a free flag football clinic that's coming up this Friday and next Friday, and free softball clinics. So once again, obviously, all year round, we are super busy. So when you hear those naysayers that there's nothing to do in Middletown, we are busy. Our fall programming, we are scheduling that now and getting everything up on our site. I have a stack of these cards I'm going to leave out here, and I please encourage you guys to take some, give them out to your constituents, and put them in your places of business. It has our QR code. People can scan and see all the different programs that we have and special events that we're offering. Any questions?
Question for Marilla, Alderman Johnson?
So jaw-droppingly inspired. Thank you. What is the, what's the maximum capacity for some of these facilities? You mentioned numbers, but what's the maximum?
Um, Sports Camp?
I meant more at the water, water facilities.
Oh, the pools. Sproch Street, we can get up to, I mean, it says like 120, but that would be really, really tight in Sproch Street Pool, like almost impossible. But 60 people in Sproch, you'd probably be shoulder-to-shoulder swimming. So 30 at one time is amazing for a Sproch Street Pool. I know in years past, we'd be lucky if we got five kids a day at Sproch Street. So it's definitely the community pool is starting to pick back up again. Davidge, there are two different capacities. The bigger pool, I believe, is around 275, and the Spray Pad, I believe, is around 175.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And if you want to put a stack of those in my mailbox, I'll distribute them appropriately.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Marilla, thank you. City Clerk?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to let everybody know an update on Channel 20. Congressman Ryan's office has been involved in our process to get our Channel 20 broadcast issues resolved. We have been working and meeting with the folks at Spectrum, and they're pretty positive. They've identified the cause. It would appear that folks that have old-fashioned cable boxes in their house that are stuck into the wall are not having the issues with the broadcast, and people who are streaming their cable through their apps on their television are the ones who are having the problems with the, with the service and seeing our meetings and our content. It is something that is fixable. It will take some time, time where Spectrum has to go back through and manually reprogram those houses that have streaming services to ensure that they get our content. So they are working on that, but we couldn't have gotten this far without Congressman Ryan and his office, so we thank them for their help in expediting that process and getting it the attention it deserves. Also, on tonight's agenda is our citywide yard sale, backed by popular demand. We had our last one at the beginning of the summer, and there's been an overwhelming call for an additional date. So we're looking for the council this evening to approve a citywide yard sale for September 14th. It will only be one day this year, and we are working with Economic and Community Development to have a spot for folks that might not be able to have a yard sale at their house if they live in an apartment in the downtown area. There will be provisions for them to be able to have a setup and a table in the Erieway Park, Erieway Park on the grass out there, which will coincide with the farmer's market that day. So stay tuned to our social media and the website for applications and signups. They should be up later this week, so we're looking forward to that, and thank you guys for your support.
Any questions for the City Clerk? Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Rick, I heard a lot of praise for the last yard sale, but also heard a lot of people say, "I didn't know about it, and could we advertise it more?" I'm not sure how we could advertise it more, but any, anything we can do to get the word out, that was one of the things we heard a lot.
Okay. So what we can do?
Anyone else? All right. Public hearings and grievances.
We have one public hearing this evening. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 5th, 2024, on or as near 7:30 PM as possible in the Common Council Chambers, second floor at 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed two-lot subdivision at 90-102 Sprague Avenue. Any persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed two-lot subdivision. The complete proposed application and map of the property for the subdivision are available in the office of the Common Council Clerk, 16 James Street, Room 12, and on the city website. Any person unable to participate at the time of the public hearing can email comments to me at rmcormick@middletownny.gov. By order of the Common Council, Richard P. McCormick, published on 8/1/2024 in the Times Record.
This time, the public hearing is now open. Anyone from the public? Any council member? Any comments? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Whatever.
Seconded by Alderman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Remarks of Alderman? Alderman Massey?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Witt?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just have one thing. I just want to thank everybody for their patience. There are certain roads in Middletown that, no matter where they are geographically, they sort of belong to everybody, and Wisner and Wickham are two of those, and in my opinion anyway. And there was construction going on, there has been construction going on, not only on both sides of Sproch Street with the paving, but also up at Wickham and Wisner with curbs, and then Sunnyside, more curbs. So everybody, chief may see it differently, but it seemed like, you know, with the exception of people trying to still cut down Wickham, everybody behaved themselves. So thank you for the patience. We're getting there, folks. We're getting there. It's going to be great at the end. Thank you very much.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Alderman Green and I will be having a constituents meeting a week from today. That's August 12th at 7:00 PM, right here in the council chambers. Night out. I hope, all the forecasts I heard said there was a flood watch for tomorrow evening particularly. So we'll just keep our fingers crossed. I heard also a lot of positive comments about how the town is looking and the work going on around town, so I think when it's done, we're all going to really appreciate it. I did go to the Town of Walk Hills public hearing last Thursday, and it was about the exemption they had proposed to their, they proposed removing the exemption to their noise and gathering ordinance. And just because we heard a lot about it, and we heard with the giant wall-sized speakers starting at 7:00 on a Sunday morning, and the burnout with the truck shutting down basically East Main Street, and the concerns about police fire, safety, et cetera. So that's why they were having the public hearing, and the reason originally for the ordinance was because when Woodstock was going to be in the Town of Walk Hill, they passed the noise and gathering ordinance, but they put in an exemption for the fairgrounds, and they put in an exemption for the Speedway. So when these local events happened that were just beyond as far as noise and concerns, the Town of Walk Hill Town Board and the supervisor were looking for ways to be notified ahead of time so that they could have some control over that. So there are two and a half hours. There was a lot of discussion, and I think basically they just tabled it for now. But just because that does concern Middletown, and, you know, the fair has been a big part of Middletown history too, even though it's technically in the Town of Walk Hills, so. And the racetrack. And the racetrack. So that's what that was about and we'll see what they come up with. The warehouses, you know, when CPV was an issue and a lot of us went to all the Town of Walk, Town of Wayway on the Town Board meetings and we were not allowed to bring up environmental justice for the fourth ward in Middletown. So that smoke that comes out of the stacks, wherever it goes, who knows? But they only monitor at the stacks. So we did, as the mayor said, we did our due diligence. We went to a lot of Town of Wayway on the Planning Board meetings and asked about traffic and about archaeological concerns and the other concerns you have. So I think we've done what we can, but I encourage people to go to look on the schedule and see when Town of Wayway on the is discussing the issue and let your voice be known. Also, basically on that regard, Route Seventeen, the idea of adding a third lane to Route Seventeen, which is going to be a humongous construction project if it's carried through. So they had the two public events in the Town of Walk Hill Community Center and a lot of engineers and people were there from the DOT and from any engineers doing the planning. And they all said, "No, no, no, the third lane was just one of many considerations." That it was not a done deal whatsoever and a lot of them were opposed to it. But then we hear both from Senator Scoofus and from Governor Hochul that it's a done deal. The third lane's a done deal, a billion dollars or whatever has been set aside for it. So I think they need to get their story straight. One of the most interesting thing on one of those boards was they said the average speed on Route Seventeen at exit one-twenty was zero to thirty miles an hour. And I challenged any one of them to dare to drive at even thirty miles an hour on a Friday or any day on Route Seventeen on those lanes, you're going to get run over. So, you know, I don't know. I see Orange County has a huge surplus in money and we could use it for ambulance service. I don't know if that's been brought up. I spoke a lot last time about good cause eviction and I asked, "Would people proposing that Middletown become involved in that? Please bring us a good legal copy of exactly what the options are in opting into the state and what Middletown can do and exactly what it says, what it says about owner occupied two families, whether they're exempt or not." You know, I asked for that. I haven't heard anything on that. I know the legal challenges have been over the five percent vacancy rate and I think it was Poughkeepsie Mayor, I'm not sure, but where they all claim that, you know, you have to be hit the five percent vacancy rate or below before you can activate any of the good cause. And all the landlords always sue the cities that try and do this, good cause eviction. And they have so far proven that there was higher than a five percent vacancy rate. So I don't know what that is and I don't know what it is in Middletown and I don't know how it would be determined, but I would like a whole lot more specifics on that so we can really give it serious consideration. And two more things quickly. I would like to just say that our constitution, contrary to a lot of what you hear, is a product of the Enlightenment. It is not a product of the Middle Ages or the Dark Ages and that's where some people would like to claim it. So we do not want to go backwards. And finally, shout out to Gwen DeZerto on Wednesday. She's one of the longest-serving members on the board, our board at the Middletown Historical Society and she's been the Genealogy Society, she's been a volunteer forever and Wednesday will be her ninetieth birthday. So I want to wish her a happy birthday. Thank you.
Aldman Ray?
Good evening. I just want to respond to a couple of things this evening. Firstly, the Dorn family, that's amazing, saving the life of a child. As a mom, she should be so proud of her girls. It's just, I am speechless on it and I'm just so thankful that they were there that day. As to Wayway on the, it is, it's deja vu all over again. We've been here with them. I do feel that, you know, I get a lot of mail from people who don't live inside the state of Middletown and all my mail says Middletown. I think there's a lot of people who live in Wayway on the who think, "I live in Middletown." So they find out about what's going on and they're down here like, "What are you doing?" And we're like, "We're not actually doing it, unfortunately." And, you know, my recommendation is always, you know, we get a lot of feedback from our voters here in Middletown because we are a beautiful city where people are involved and they know who represents them and what they want. In Wayway on the, I don't know if that's happening because they seem to make a lot of choices that seem to go against what their residents actually want from them. I highly recommend to be at those board meetings and to contact these people directly or run for office and run on the basis that that's enough, you know? Do what the residents want, not what you think is good in your pocket or this or that or the other. We, you know, we have to make those choices every day as a board. For the good cause eviction, I support protecting our tenants, especially the good ones. As an alderman, we see both. We have had properties in my own neighborhood that have been in absolute blight and, you know, landlords who have actually struggled to get these people removed and they destroy the properties and as neighbors, we get to live with it and look at it. So I see that side of it. But I'm also a single mom of four and I'm lucky enough to own my home, but I know with my tight budget that if I lived in an apartment and my landlord said to me at the end of the year, "Guess what? Your rent's five hundred dollars more a month." I'm homeless and so are my kids. So for me, this is a serious issue. This is a serious issue for families and, you know, I've heard staggering numbers from the school district on how many kids in our schools don't have homes. And I'm sorry, but that like, that breaks my heart. And so anything we can do, I'm certainly going to be reading up on what has been done by the state and what we can do to help, you know, the families that need this help and how we can do that. But that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Aldman Johnson?
I think I've said quite enough this evening. Thank you.
Aldman Jean Francois?
Nothing this evening.
Aldman Tobin?
Yeah, the Dorn family. I mean, when I was a little kid, I was, I went to a swimming hole and there was a little kid playing by the water and the opposite happened. We found out later on that the kid fell in and no one saw him. So this, you know, the Dorn family saved someone's child, their grandson, niece, nephew, and they're, you know, he's lucky to live, so I mean, and have his whole life in front of him. So I mean, that was an amazing story that really heroes. As far as good cause, what I've read about it, I support it. I mean, I understand the caution, we don't want to open up the city to litigation, but you know, I think we should look at it. I think currently the raising the rates, I mean, my stepsister, she's kicked out of her apartment because someone just wanted, they knew they could get more money for the apartment and they almost, you know, they raised it by like thirty percent. And so, you know, that's not fair either if you paid your rent on time and you're a good tenant. There's, you're only allowed to get kicked out if you violate, you know, the different aspects of that you did something wrong. But if you haven't done anything wrong, you know, that you're protected and I think it's eight percent or CPI, which averages about ten percent would be the max you could increase the rent. So I think it's something a lot of our tenants would appreciate, but I think the devil be actually in the details though.
Okay, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to declare surplus equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, second by Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin? Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing a renewal of the twenty-twenty-four band.
Resolution sponsored by Witt, second by Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, accepting a one thousand dollar donation from First Federal Savings Bank for outdoor movie night.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, second by Aldman Jean Francois, any discussion?
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Old Woman Ray, accepting donations from the Middletown Eastern Wellness, which is Northern Medical Academy, Middletown Professional Firefighters Association, Star Paint and Body Works Inc., Piccolo El Cucino Avino and Dental Care Alliance to support the National Night Out Against Crime event.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, second by Aldman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, authorizing a citywide yard sale.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, second by Alderman Ray, any discussion?
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, accepting a notice of determination of non-significance pursuant to six NYCRR six seventeen point one oh in reference to a two-lot subdivision at ninety-one oh-two Sprague Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Massey, any discussion?
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin approving a two-lot subdivision at ninety-one oh-two Sprague Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, second by Aldman Jean Francois, any discussion?
Tobin?